We have the problem.
Oh, great.
We're live.
Let's bring the City Council Public Safety, so commuting to orders Wednesday, July 16th, 2014. Hello, thanks all for coming. We do not have the minutes from the previous meeting, so we'll do that to the next one.
We do have them.
I will have them.
That we want to.
I'll submit them.
Were you able to submit these, or did you just print out a copy for this?
I printed it out for you to see, and then you and I have to approve them, then I'll submit them to the law.
Okay.
I'll drop that by tomorrow if you want.
Do you want to take a look at these?
Sure.
You weren't in town today.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from May 13th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion. I can vote.
You want to?
I abstain.
That was a very short meeting.
All right, public speak time. Seeing no one here from each of our public guys who are here for a chance.
Is that a date?
It is. Great.
May 13th.
Okay. So, let's talk about the street acceptances for Kingsbury Way, Bayberry Drive, and Birchwood Drive.
So, actually, I was going to ask that we table this until September, because there are some issues that are still being worked out. And I know initially, my dad had filed it, and then I think he talked to Barbara about removing, because he said at this point, he never submitted a deed to City Council to review, and there were some things that Bernie still needed to do that Jim had requested.
Yes.
So, at this point, and I think there are a couple of other things that are still going on out there, so we need some time before we want to move forward on this. That was what I got from my father today.
Great. That's pretty much exactly what I got. Thanks for following up on that deed and the submission of the plan. There were a couple of things that went back and forth, and it was just a matter of seeing where it ended up. You have this memo from Jim Brachter, the city engineer. It is dated October 23rd, 2013.
Yep.
What I did is I sat down with Jim, and we went through everything that was supposed to be done. I had him check off what was done.
Okay.
And then these are incomplete.
So...
So, I thought this might help you out as far as where we are.
So, he's good on Kingsbury?
Yep.
He's all set there?
Those were okay.
Okay.
These were okay, and then these easements are to be determined.
I think that's some of the, those are some of the things we're still working on.
Prosestous.
So, yeah. Which is why we need some time.
Great. So, yeah, those are to be determined, and then that one's incomplete.
Okay.
And that one's also to be determined. Does this jive with what you have as far as?
That's my understanding.
That's your understanding as well?
Yep.
Okay. Do you guys want to take a look at this?
This was all set, right? The first part of Birchwood, was that all set?
Yes.
That was okay. Okay. So, I'm just going to edit it. I'll just go into it quickly.
Yeah, I'll look at it after you're done. I have a little stack of duplicates, but I don't believe that particularly one I had to put it up.
You went for delay till August?
Yeah.
September.
Okay, and that jives with the claim to pour, had requested, voted to table request until such time as concerns with the city engineer. And then, that was from 2012, and then 2013, September. They agreed with the recommendations from Jim. So, it looks like they're pretty good, except for that, you know, deed and a copy of the plan, but that would be great.
Okay. So, what do you, you need to finish up the checklist, and we need to resolve some easement issues? And then there are a couple items he still needed to complete. And then I have to get a deed over to the City Council so that they can review it.
Okay. One of the things that I want to keep track of as we move forward, it's Kingsbury, Berry as in the root, E, two Rs. I've seen it spelled a couple different ways.
The plan dictates.
Yeah. Just so that we keep that confirmed going forward.
Ken, I didn't read that. I just saw it. I went too fast. Jimmy mentioned that the last thing about having Bernie seal, reseal all the cracks, because, you know, remember you had us go on a field trip, so.
Yeah.
And I know that one is a lot more, has a lot more cracks in it than Willow and Autumn had. It looks like some have been repaired in the past, the grass is now growing through them, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's.
I think that's about it, too.
I mean, I think that's something we should require, at least I would be wanting to have required. I know Jim mentioned that, I just don't know if he had it in that, because I didn't, you know, I was reading, I didn't see it when I flipped through there, but.
Read through this?
But I read it real fast, so that may be something we can, we can talk to Jim about. Because that was what he also mentioned, that he felt that.
Well, if we're going to have that, I'd like to add it now.
Right. If it's not in there, I don't know, again, I read it fast, but.
I don't think it was in here.
I mean, I'd like to add that now, in my thing, because again, just to.
I agree. I saw the same thing. I was just going to ask you guys what you thought of, because there's anything in addition to Jim.
Yeah, there's a few things.
But is the, up for, maybe, I know the streets are all, there's Kingsbury, and there's Birchwood. There's also the one with the little cul-de-sac, is that Laurel? Is that, or do you know?
I don't know that I got that.
I assume that's up for acceptance. It's off Kingsbury. It's like a little.
Birchwood Drive. There's Kingsbury Way, Bayberry Drive, and Birchwood Drive. Kingsbury is the long.
Kingberry's the long.
Bayberry is the one that kind of scoots around, and then Birchwood Drive is very short. There was an end on Birch Drive that has like a gate, right? Is that Birchwood?
I'm not sure, but I have to see the kind of year of the calendar, because I grabbed the other file.
No, we don't. That's what I was asking about, is that we've got no.
We don't even have, oh, I would have brought the whole big, I had, I pulled out all the big plans, but I didn't bring it down, and I grabbed the wrong file. Because we have like the actual subdivision plans that we submitted.
Right. I mean, I could pull it up on that.
Yeah, it was just the street, it's where you come out, almost, you're almost, if you entered by Strong, then you exit by Plain.
Uh huh.
It's almost at Plain. If you, if you entered by Strong.
I think that might be Laurel.
Laurel. And is that up for acceptance, or is that?
I don't.
That's not.
I've never seen Laurel. I don't think that's in here.
No. I didn't see that one mentioned.
Because that's really in the worst shape of all the streets up there.
The one that connects to.
It doesn't really connect. It's a, it's, if you went all the way through the development, like from Kingsbury off Strong, and you come back out on Plain, it's a right-hand turn just before you get to Plain. It's a cul-de-sac. It's kind of a lost.
It may, because there's additional work.
More to be, yeah, I don't know.
That's why he didn't.
I just had him swing up there, and I noticed.
I'd have to look at the plan, the acceptors, and I hope that's, let's see, I could run over.
But it may have been, I would assume it's probably in that Crown Medical Estates plan or recovery. So, I don't know, I don't know if all the ones.
Laurel Drive is the one with the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
That was, I thought, in the worst shape up around the cul-de-sac. There was some cracks from grasses either.
I actually have.
Can you accept this?
Laurel Drive was accepted in 2002.
So, it's already in it. So, we already own it.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It's on us.
Then we can take that one off.
Was that the list of all the ones that have been?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, it's part of our whole street acceptance protocol thing that we're trying to get together, so this isn't as challenging.
Crazy. I have a question.
Sure.
I noticed on Kingsbury Way, the sidewalk, what's going to happen with the sidewalk on the Strong end?
I don't know.
It's like, it comes in from Strong Street, and then it stops, and then there's that mega McMansion. There's no sidewalk from, from maybe 300 feet in, all the way down to where the empty lots are, that are split for sale. So, and it's like, it's like, it's just, it stops, grass, the empty lots that haven't been sold or done yet.
You're talking about, so.
Coming in off of Strong. So, this is Strong, and you come in here, and someone bought two lots, and they built that huge house.
Right.
And then it curves this way, and now the road now continues.
The road continues on.
Didn't for a long time.
Yeah. Where the continuation is, there is no sidewalk. It's like sidewalk here ends.
It's because that the additional, like, aren't, there aren't houses, right?
Right.
They ain't all got any yet. So, normally, what he does is, when, when there's that kind of construction that's going to go on, so flats are going to be sold, and things are going to be built.
He does the sidewalk.
He does the sidewalk last, so that there's not substantial damage to it, as machinery comes in and out.
Okay.
Building, that would be my assumption.
Okay.
I have to confirm it with him, but that's been his standard protocol, because otherwise, you know, if the sidewalk goes in, and then people are coming in and out, and they're excavating, and they're doing whatever.
That sounds reasonable.
That's reasonable. Is the proposal so that we accept all of it from Plain to Strong? Because I would kind of like to either put something in there, or, or just do the acceptance of two.
When those lots are developed, the sidewalks are added.
Because if.
Yeah.
Or just do the acceptance up to where the sidewalk ends, and then leave that other portion, I don't know. I don't know what your suggestions are, but I'm, you know, I really think that it should, something should be something.
Does that sound like something we can?
Not that he, I don't think that Bernie wouldn't do it, but. Do we know what lot? I mean, it says the sidewalk along the fronting lots, 53 through 55, is not to install.
Okay.
It's one of the things that Jim mentioned, that that's the area.
Yeah, that must be, yeah.
He's saying that it has to be done, and as I said, normally, it's not his protocol until it's done.
Right.
To, you know, so that there's less damage. And then I noticed that, like, at 34, there were some really big potholes around the water covers, or the water, the water covers, there was some really big chunks of.
Around Kingsbury?
Yeah, on Kingsbury, yep.
Around the drains? The drains?
34. By, by the water caps, you know, they, they have sewer caps, and they have the water caps. The water caps are about that big. There's two water caps at around 34, and it's, seems to be have some big, almost like potholes around them. Probably just needs to be filled, but. And it was around what? Because it's. I think it's around 34, maybe? It's closer to the Plain Street end. It's on, if you're, if you're coming in from Plain Street, it's on the left side. I didn't take any pictures of it. I had too many people on my butt.
Well, it seems like the sidewalk issue was covered on the list, and I'm betting we could move forward with, say, you know, with the understanding that with the plotter developed that a sidewalk.
It looks like they're all portioned out and everything, and ready to go, so.
Yeah. And I think what it meant says valid, I mean, you can't put somebody else in here.
And so, I get it, how it's not a town start, fix, case fixing.
I get it.
So.
I get it. So, we'd like to see the cracks filled, and if grass is growing through them.
Yeah, I mean, whatever the roads we're accepting, it's just, it looks like in the past, because it's been since 91, so, I mean, it's been, it looks like he's repaired them in the past. I think if he's going over with that liquid stuff that fills in cracks again.
Yeah.
Please give us their story.
And to take a thoughtful look at some of the infrastructure that's coming through the roads, to just look at the edge, and make sure.
Yeah.
Make sure that's not unique.
Yeah.
If you present this, and it seems like it's something that's.
We should, I mean, I don't think I have any objection to that. I mean, he did everything that was pretty much.
I have a procedural question. Do we have to do that in the form of a motion that we're requesting that they take a look at those two things?
I don't think, do you think so? I don't think so. I mean, it's just a recommendation that we're, I mean, as long as we're putting in the minutes, that that's something we've asked Attorney Captain.
Should we have an update of this from Jim Brachter? We can make two additions.
I mean, you know, we can put it in a final motion if we want, and we'll, it's what we accepted. And put it on his list, you know? I'm kind of drawn to it.
Yeah, I think, I think it's moving along. It doesn't seem to be.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you want to email me and say we're ready for September?
Yeah. Sure. I can just give you an update as we go along, and then once I've submitted everything, and we feel things are done, all that, you know.
Okay. So, are we taking a motion to table this until we hear from?
Until we hear, like, till the fall, when we hear from Attorney Captain or the clap again.
So, who's going to make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we table this item until, I'll say the fall, until we hear from the progress from Attorney Captain, as to when they feel it can be brought back forward, that things are going.
Great.
And the other two are on, for what, August, right? Is that, you said, that it got moved for public hearing? The other two?
Yes.
Okay, so that's on.
There's more?
No, 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 no. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
A million miles.
In my head, that's dumb.
So, Willow, and, because I'll probably go, so Willow and Autumn, I'm, when, I know the next meeting's not until August, right? First at the full City Council?
Right. We only have one meeting.
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday? Okay. I gotta vote Mark on the calendar.
I'm checking with the data. Six?
August 6th?
Six.
Okay.
Good job.
Good.
I'm impressed.
So, motion pass three deserved, did we vote?
All those in favor?
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, mother. Have a good evening. You too. Have a good rest of your night. I'm going back to work.
Hush.
Bye. Worked it?
All righty. Let's put all of that away. So, moving on to continuing review of protocol procedure for street acceptances. I met with Jim Brachter today, because he couldn't make it to the meeting, but he's really excited that we're taking.
I'm sure he is.
You know?
Well, if you read back through a lot of his memos, he's been asking for.
That was the thing that came up over and over again, so, most of the departments just kind of seemed to go like, well, and that puts an awful lot of responsibility on him.
Because I know you, you did talk to Jessica, and just reading her email, it said she was going on vacation, but pretty much we're just doing what Jim says, you know? And I, I think if we do develop some type of, which, you know, I know we're going to go over some of the things, but like a checklist or something, I mean, I think it does have to start with a plane, or, and, and stuff like that.
Absolutely. So, Jim definitely gave me this. I'm going to start with this, because it's quick.
Sure.
So, this is a roadway inventory that he's been keeping track of, and I think this is a great start for us as far as when things are accepted and when they're not accepted. And this is actually, translate into cold, hard cash for East Hampton, because there are some segments of road that aren't accepted, and because they aren't accepted, we don't get credit for them for money, for chapter 90 money, so.
Which was getting back to these, this is the problem to me, to let somebody go for 20, 20 years and not get any thumbs out of it.
Precisely. So, I think it would be really important for us, as part of the protocol, to put together, you know, the street acceptances, really take a look at what needs to be accepted, and then, you know, if we can guinea pig those streets for this protocol, and make sure that we're doing it correctly, and that we're happy with the procedure that we came up.
I know you mentioned one street, and I can't think of it off, now offhand, I'd have to look back on it.
You mentioned it a few hours ago, I can't.
Remember, you said where they accepted it, and then.
Yeah, but there was a whole spence of it that wasn't.
That was never accepted, at least by, he thinks maybe it was accepted, but there's no record of it in the state, so the state hasn't given.
Are we, so, this project just compile the list of the roads that we think have been accepted, but no one has any verification of it?
We have to check. We have to check. I mean, Jim bumps into them because of certain things, but we have, I think he said 80 or 84 miles of road in East Hampton, and that's how they figure out what money we get, we got a percentage of that.
Right.
So, it's only our accepted streets, so if we make sure that there's streets that we get like them.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, this is, I think.
Get them all up to date. Plus, it's a liability issue.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if something happens, and there's not the proper street signage, or something else like that.
So, I think it'd be really helpful for Jim if we helped him with this project. I mean, he's going to understand what's going on, but, you know, if we can just pick at a little every, you know.
Slow off and take over.
Few weeks, and we do our, our thing, I think we can get through it, and it would help.
Our biggest problem seems to be documentation that the city has or hasn't kept. You know, and I guess that's going forward, I'm hoping that's something we can rectify also, that, you know, I don't know if it was just a former planner, or, or what, there's just, you know, a lot of the stuff we can't find, or people are having trouble finding.
Yeah. So, what I did with Jim today, which I was thinking would be good to do with you guys this evening, is to put all that Kingsbury stuff away.
Well, this is yours.
Okay.
Did we get that? We got that memo, didn't we? Did we copy that or not?
Yeah, but if you need one, let me know. Do you want me to send it to you?
You sent it to me via the email, with all of those other things, I'm, I'm good if it's in the email.
Okay.
I just didn't get a chance to download everything. I glanced at it, I just.
I'm going to have that silly let it go song in my head for the rest of this movie this evening.
I'm frozen?
Yeah.
Going to go to the movie?
Maybe.
I am. I'm bringing my granddaddy.
Maybe.
My grandniece and nephew, my granddaughter, granddaughters, stuff. Having family.
So, this was really helpful, because that easement is a big thing, so it sounds like everybody's going to get together and work on that, and maintenance issues on the catch bases, and whole system above that, spill plan. I think we're, I feel good about that.
Yeah. Good. Just get updates, everything.
Okay.
So, we're moving on to street acceptance protocol?
We are. So, what I did with Jim today is we went through all of the other ones, all the other samples that we got. You know, the copy of our current protocol. The one that everybody seems to like is the north, the town.
The handover.
Yeah.
And I kind of like that one, too. I think they were the most thorough.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's, and it's all Massachusetts law, so it all pertains to.
Absolutely. So, what we have, so page one, with the procedure sequence. I think we can skip over this for now, because this has the 60 days, or 45 days prior to, we might need to work on those numbers.
Yes, because it's a town.
Procedure for street acceptance for town.
And they're setting it up for town meetings.
Right, precisely. So, what I'm thinking is, why don't we put the protocol together, and we can reverse engineer the timeframe, so that would be towards the end of this project. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Page two, I absolutely love that it ends in best of luck. I feel like we need to have that in our verse.
Best of luck.
I don't know if that was meant to be as funny as it is, but it's really good. So, personally, I would like to keep that in there. I apologize, there are not page numbers, but item B, street acceptance documentation, it's the one, two, fourth paging.
Street acceptance procedures?
B, street acceptance documentation.
I tried to put these in order, too, but I.
Yeah, it's not everything.
Street acceptance documentation B.
Okay. So, these are notes from Jim. Items A through E?
Yep.
All good. He likes those.
Okay.
One of the things that's an addition, that we would have to write, a certificate of compliance with conditions imposed by development and conservation committee, which I think is a great idea.
It's there, so that he wants, we don't have that now?
No, no, no. We don't.
So, he wants, he really likes E.
Well, there's an arrow next to it, it's not prioritized, but I think it's a good thing to put in.
Well, of course it is.
So, we may have to write those, those compliances, you know, like a little blank form, that, that they can sign off on, you know, that the conservation committee has looked at the plans, blah, blah, we don't see it, affected wetlands.
So, you want to basically add them into the acceptance procedures, so.
Precisely.
You go to conservation commission.
Yeah.
And if they don't find anything, they check it off and sign off on it?
Yep.
We find this property fine, no conditions.
No.
Yeah, not, no conditions are set forth on this property?
Right.
Go away.
Yeah.
Basically, go, go forward.
Yeah.
Best of luck.
Come on, that is not the most hilarious thing about, the fact that it actually says that.
So, so what you would want to do then on the street acceptance is to add, probably, would you want to add that on the checklist?
Here's his addition to it, which is why I brought it forward. Here's his addition to it, which is why I brought it forward.
So what, what would be his addition?
This applies if they have conservation commission jurisdiction where air wetlands. If there's no CC involvement, stormwater permit certificate to be provided.
Yeah, because we have stormwater work as well. So adding the stormwater.
So if not provided or if not.
Stormwater permit certificate to be provided if there's no conservation commission involved, if it's not air wetlands. Which I thought was a good catch.
Stormwater, stormwater what?
Permit certification. So what we're kinda building up to with this protocol is at the end you would have certificates of compliance from each department.
Must be provided then, right? So.
Yep.
So certificate of compliance with conditions imposed on development by conservation commission under the Wetlands Protection Act. If no commission involvement is needed, stormwater permit certification must be provided.
Perfect, bingo. Next page. F, G, H, I, J, and K, all good.
Which one, F, G, H, I, J, K?
Yep. He said all good with him.
And, and this can all be scanned in?
We'll write it.
Maybe he's just gonna write it out, I mean, because it could really.
Well, there's other things we wanna like add, yeah, I'll probably scan some of it, but. Once we look at the breadth of the editing that we're going to do, I'll figure out the best.
That makes it be inhibited to your scandal, bro. Inhabitants.
No, we put these Tantin seal and.
So lucky, they're such a litigious little community.
Alright, so he likes F. Instrument suitable for recording.
Yep.
Deed for the street itself.
Yep.
Inhabitants of the city of East Hampton. Deed of gift and trust.
That becomes if applicable.
So deed of gift and trust for open space if applicable, right, that's there. Okay. Let's see.
Board of Selectmen and Defense Council.
Right. Certificate signed by attorney. Names, addresses of each property owner, mortgage, having rights or interests in the street's easements. That's good. Request for a public hearing by who? Who would handle these public hearings? The Department of Public Works? So name and addresses of each going down through there, along with the request for a public hearing by the city council?
I'm sorry.
Which one?
I'm on J.
J, okay.
Okay.
So name and addresses of each property owner and mortgage having given rights or interests in the street.
So there's two different ways.
Along with requests for a public hearing by the city council for street acceptance pursuant to master general laws, right?
I would say it has to be city council.
But when there's two applications for street acceptances, one of them is development, which is primarily where we get. And one of them is like a private way.
Petition.
That the community, who lives on that street, put it together, and I think that covers the community that if there's a private way and they're like, hey, you know what, we wanna go this other way. So that is why there's the names and addresses of all the others.
Really have to have a public hearing.
And that's one of the questions I had for you, and maybe that will become clear as we go through this exercise, is do we have two protocols? You know, one for this particular scenario and then one for this particular scenario. For now, it seems like it's fine to have them together.
It seems that they have them together.
Yeah, not everybody does, so, you know.
So.
We just have to figure out what works best for us. I don't have an opinion on it.
No, it's just everybody.
Time that the. Yep.
Is the, um, when the petitioners, is that, I think by state law, that, I think that's set in state law. I'm not sure if it's mentioned, which state law is mentioned in here, and maybe one of those mentioned in here. I think that is like by state law, how, you know, so many.
How you petition it forward, yeah, or it's like a percentage of.
Right, so it may be mentioned in one of these, when they mention that.
That's what I mean, like it might come forward where, you know, I think, I think we move forward as it's together so that we're doing one. But if it gets to the point where we have to like separate it out as a separate protocol? Easy enough to do. I'm just pointing it out as that's applicable to this other situation, which we don't normally do, but. Okay, so moving on to C, special requirements. Section one, I think we should have the city attorney take a look at that.
Okay.
And that might actually be the language from master general law that you were just talking about.
Probably.
I mean, obviously, we're gonna have the city attorney take a look at the whole thing.
Well, yeah, because it's, you know, registered general laws, 185 Land Corps. Yeah, I mean, what I'm, what my first thought is, it's absolutely positively proper language. It would just have to be, you know, Hampshire County and, and those things changed. Cause we're not in Essex County and it's.
Right.
North District Land Registration.
Yeah, the location and who they're talking about are there.
And all of that.
Yeah.
And then, but I'm thinking that probably, this is probably all very proper, so. But to have, have them take a quick look at it, you know?
Mm-hmm. So number two, um, Jim really perked up at. Uh, all property taxes owed to the town for anything must be paid for the town recommends street.
Absolutely.
So they would get our 180 beforehand.
Yep.
Because basically, the street acceptance procedure has been kind of a.
Lax's.
Lax. Loss financially for the city of East Hampton.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, yeah. Yeah, and then, and not only that, but it will also keep everybody.
Well, there's some developers who have multiple projects going on.
You know, set a standard that they are after.
Precisely. Okay, so D, work to be completed after the acceptance.
Oh, okay. And how are we gonna hold them to that?
Through the bond moneys.
Ah, okay. Developer brings original recorded deeds, easements, original miler, planning board release, final bond moneys. Okay, perfect.
So what happened prior is a perfect example of how we would do that. They need to put those sidewalks in, so we would hold on to that bond until those sidewalks went in. Even though the lots aren't sold, even though everything hasn't happened, that's how we would ensure. Like you said, I'm sure they are gonna put the sidewalks in, that way we're gonna be able to.
It's a check and balance. It's a check and balance.
The, the thing here, usually that's placed by the planning board, and that's the trouble with the planning board sometimes, like, in my opinion, this is strictly my opinion. Oftentimes, they haven't put sufficient bonds on these developers really to cover a lot of the stuff, so I think. You know, I don't know how we, I mean, I guess it wouldn't be our privilege to actually set the bond, that would be theirs, but I don't know how.
It would, but I mean, we could also through the city council, send them a memo or a memorandum to, to maybe. Well, we, you know actually how we could approach it, I think, is how do they set?
I believe it's a percentage.
How, how do?
It's a percentage.
How, what is the formula that they use that they set?
So you're saying that if it's a $10 million project, it's a certain percentage?
Or how much it costs to do the road, like, you know, it costs.
A million dollars.
A half a million dollars to do, you know, 500 feet of road or whatever it is, and it's a percentage of that. And then the other thing that we can do is, um, deduct maintenance, like, snow plowing and whatnot.
That's what I know that you mentioned the last time.
That's something Jim's gonna look into?
Yeah, cause Jim's gonna look into it, because that's one of our problems of plowing these roads.
Precisely.
That would not be put into necessarily this document, but would, or would it?
I think it would, because this is the street acceptance's procedure, and if you follow this procedure, this is what's gonna happen. If there's.
In other words, I think they would like, in the case of snow plowing, if I, they would have a right to maintain it, but if they're not maintaining it, and then the city has to go in and maintain it to it.
Then we'll charge them.
Then we take it out of their bond.
It's just what we do with sidewalks. When residents don't plow their sidewalks, we, we as a city can send the DPW in, but we will charge it a home room, so we're putting a lien on their property.
In this case, we would have a bond that we'd probably, assuming that you don't get, there's another word.
And so, so what I did is I asked Jim to take a look at, um, like, what kind of fee structure that would be, if it would be like, okay.
Because it is a public safety issue to plow those roads, so that's.
Sure is.
These cars get down. Do we do it the first time free, charge, you know, how about first time, 200? Do we do an incremental increase? Do we do a flat rate every single time? You know, you know, some market rate kinda thing.
So you're looking for a fee structure for maintenance of the road until acceptance?
Specifically, maintenance relating to safety vehicles being able to use the road. You know, we can't go in and make every single pothole perfect and then charge them money, you know? But as long as the maintenance relates to public health and safety, is I think the way we should word it.
See, the theoretical way this is supposed to work, while subdivision is private, because the developer's supposed to be plowing.
Right.
We've always taken it as, and maintained it. What we've done, and probably wrongly, is we've let them or we've said, well, geez, they maybe can't do it to the standard, so we've come in and done it for free, which is a big boon to these guys, you know?
Yeah, we've also.
So I think a thing like this, like, you know, one developer, if he's got the equipment, maybe he wants to maintain the snow plowing himself, and as long as he maintains it to the standards of the DPW and the police department, I have no problem with that. But if, if he doesn't, and we have to come in and do that, that's maybe when you can take from the bond.
Okay, so maybe that's something that we add. These are the standards of the police department, the DPW. You're more than welcome to do it yourself. Here are the standard.
Until we accept the street, but if you don't maintain the standards, then it would be, you know, the, the city will plow it and the money will be, you know, retrotracted to the bond. Obviously, the city's officers have to look at all this stuff.
Precisely, but, and this is why we have this conversation. I mean, I think the city should definitely get compensated for doing this.
Yeah, and you're also, you're also gonna get complaints from the residents who are paying their taxes.
And you have to.
Why, why are you not plowing these roads? What's going on? Why are we not getting plowed? And the response will be, well, you're not an accepted street, so you're, developers supposed to be doing this. You know, there's gonna have to be some kinda mechanism or something for the DPW that, yeah. So if they're not.
Cause you can't wait, you can't wait two days to make.
No, exactly.
It's gotta be something that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think if we put this language in, this is a conversation that we're gonna have with every single department. They're gonna have these kinda questions.
And they should know that. The developers will know that upfront, because it's what's going on.
Exactly, and they will get input from the DPW precisely what they're looking for, from the assessors, exactly what they're looking for. Jim's gonna work on, you know, trying to find like some sort of fee structure for this.
So we'll set this all up, we're gonna basically send it to all of the departments and say.
What do you think?
Alright, this is, this is the draft.
Precisely.
What things do you wanna see put in here?
Added or really that you feel.
Your department, what do you think is good? What do you think is, is maybe not so good or restrictive and?
Yeah, that's my intention.
Okay.
Just keep everybody to take, you know, all eyes on it, so I think this is, this is one of those topics where everybody's gonna go, ooh, you know? So, so we're gonna get a lot of input on that.
Particularly on one.
Right, but basically, it comes down to fee structure and, you know, our standards of maintaining.
Those, if I can get off the thing a little bit.
Yeah.
The town of Westford, I don't know if they have that one there.
Yeah, I grew up there, ask me anything.
They had one provision in there that I, that I liked, and I don't know if we could incorporate it, or if you guys feel we should incorporate it.
Yeah, what I wanted to do was go through each one and then throw that in.
The road must be completed to the specifications in the last approved site plan in the subdivision, and be held to that standard for the road regardless of the year of completion. So to me, that puts the heat on to the contractor, if he waits, like in this particular case we're dealing with now, 20 years, he still has to bring it to the, that wouldn't be filling the cracks, that would be putting, that would be resurfacing the street, I mean, because that's a.
Which one was that?
It was the town of Westford. I just saw this one.
Some of these.
It's just like a one, I only see one, I know, I've gone shuffle them and.
Well, I got Boylston.
Right, I think it might just be a one-page.
There's two, three.
Is there more to it?
Was that?
Wes Boylston had a lot.
Wes Boylston had a lot. Is this one?
Some of them.
Some of them didn't have any, it just said public street layout acceptance procedure.
Yeah, that was one that was like 80 pages, and I was just trying to get this out to you. But, um, yeah, we'll get to Westford in a second, because I agree with you.
I'm not seeing Westford. I have Wes Boylston.
It looks like this, street acceptances referenced for subdivision roads, town of Westford.
Yeah, I know, we have that one sheet, I'm gonna do that now. My role. Yes, okay. Wes Boylston. Wes Boylston and.
I don't have, I don't even have ours.
So I think that's good on work to be completed after acceptance, and then releasing the final bond moneys, usually maintenance moneys upon request of the developer, that all makes sense. So then the next segment is the street acceptance guidelines. And this lists those certificates of compliance that we were talking about. So number one is from the planning department, number two is from Public Works, number three is from city council, I mean, a city solicitor. Four is from Public Works, and it has all their contact information.
Yep, saw that.
And then we do a certificate of compliance from each of those departments. So then, once they get that, then the petitioner must schedule a date with the city council to obtain a vote. So, you know, that's.
So it should be transmitted to the planning department from the board of selectmen, from the city council. The planning department will then schedule you for an hearing with the planning board. So it all goes back onto the planning board to say, so we have your, we have your petition, and now, these are all of the things that have done, and now we will then say to the city council, all of these things have been done, so now we're gonna submit your petition for street acceptance to the city council.
Well, we can, we can do it, and we're writing it, so.
I, I like the idea of it going back to the planning board. They're the ones that initially set all of the criteria. I think ultimately, if it began with them, it should end with them.
They go through, make sure all the paperwork's in order.
Yes.
And submit it to city council.
Yes.
Then it goes to the subcommittee, then it comes back to the city council and project.
Yes.
I think, yeah, that's what I thought too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of, the rigus is written, it's kind of of a little bit confusing, but it sounds like.
They have, it's like.
So we're saying.
It's said transmit it be submitted.
Right, because it looks like it comes from the selectmen to the planning board, and then they have. So what, I guess what we're saying, if I understand it, is everyone else gets this.
Sure should be.
They're gonna go to the planning board.
We'll get a heads up, but we're not gonna do anything with it until the planning board says.
All this.
Yes.
All this is.
This has all been done.
Right, checked off.
That we put in for compliance and we, we are now.
And we've had.
We're okay with it.
And we're here with city council.
Instead of Jim signing off on it, it should be the planning board. I agree, yeah.
So they will go through all these things, and then when they feel a thing, then they send it to the city council for the final, to the subcommittee, and then to the full council for a final vote.
That's what I think.
So, so on, on the first, on the street acceptance guidelines, on number five, the petitioner shall submit a petition to the city council and the planning board stating that the roadway in question has received these certificates of compliance, and will attach a copy of the certificate of compliance with the petition to the, to the city council and the planning board. No? Yes? I want the planning board to be, Department of Public Works, town council, notify planning board, the results of the review referred to an above step two and three, and a certificate of compliance will be issued by the planning department if the results are positive.
So, the planning board is the last certificate of compliance, and part of their requirements for compliance are that they have these certificates of compliance from the other departments. So then that's when the planning department sends it to us, is one thing.
Right.
So what this language actually says, this, they put a back on the petitioner, but I don't think that needs to happen.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's almost like it's bouncing it.
Yeah, it's kind of both confusing, it's like you got everything, and then it's like the petitioner.
You have everything, bring it to the planning department, and then you're gonna submit the petition now to, in this case, the selectmen.
Yeah, and then the selectmen send it to the planning.
And then the selectmen send it.
To the planning board, and then the planning board back to the.
Department for the, yeah, I, yeah, I think we could probably cut a lot of those steps out and say, go to the planning board, there was the first, there was the last. The planning board goes through all of the checklists and says.
When all the compliance is the thing.
The developers in full compliance of everything that we've asked.
That's like their final compliance, is the planning board's compliance.
And, and so our recommendation, and they could, just to say to the developer, our recommendation is that you go forth to the city council for street acceptance with our recommendations. And then, then the petitioner can petition the city council for the street acceptance, but not before stopping at the planning board for their very last compliance.
I agree.
Yeah. It shouldn't be Jim. It shouldn't be the city engineer.
I mean, obviously, he's, he's part of that, that you gotta get his compliance, but.
Yeah.
He's just that part.
Part of the compliance, but he didn't issue the.
No, he didn't issue the plans or the.
And the restrictions or anything else.
The sidewalks and the lighting and.
Yeah.
He just sets the.
The flora, the fauna, the, the grass, the, all of it is all put in by the planning board. So I think ultimately, it should be them that says, okay, you've, you've done everything we've asked you to do. Here's our signature. You can now go to the city council and.
With your back of information.
And request street acceptance.
And I think this is something, you know, you can maybe mention to Jessica when she is back, because I mean, I think, you know, unfortunately, is, with the planning board, the planner kinda has to. We'll get a lot of that put upon them to.
Yep, and I think that's another segment where it's actual, the actual procedure, everybody's gonna look.
But have to weigh in and say.
That's why I skipped right over the 60 days, 45 days, whatever. We're not gonna be able to plug in a timeframe until we actually.
Till we see what our actual.
But, you know, there's a couple of things here that show those steps, and I, I think if we present this in a way that says here, this, this seems like a logical.
Flow.
Flow, precisely. So, okay, so then number 10, because it looks like, yeah, what you just highlighted there, so number 10. Jim said good, he likes this, where the petitioner shall record the original miler, necessary documentation at the registry of deeds, petitioner's attorney notifies the planning department, recording's been done, so.
To the planning department, again, yes?
Yep.
Yep, because, oh, that's kinda where we're having this disconnect.
You're gonna love the next page.
Things are kinda being lost.
Right.
Tell me the next page.
It's like the planning board issues this, and then it never, there's no review, or they never see what, it's like put on Jim to come back and like, just complete it. They really should go back to them, it's their plan, you know?
Right back.
So, if we look at the next page.
Oh, it's this one. A lot of pages. Oh, it's this one, I don't have our pages.
Um, registered mail number?
Oh.
Your planning board numbers?
Street Acceptance Checklist.
Oh, going back to the one that you told us to, okay.
I took that off.
Okay.
This is...
Yeah.
It was my note.
I had that on the top.
So, the receipt of the request for a certificate of compliance from the petitioner. I don't like the language on that, I don't think that makes sense. I think it's the receipt of the request for the actual street acceptances themselves.
So on receipt of...
There's gonna be a request for the street acceptances, you know, they say.
So take receipt out of there, and then, so request for certificate...
I crossed out certificate of compliance and wrote street acceptance.
What did you write, Julie?
I wrote street acceptances, because I figure this checklist is gonna be filled out by the planning department.
Yeah, do you want receipt? Receipt of request? Is that set? Maybe. I don't know. Or just request for street acceptance from petitioner.
Let's go back to this. Maybe, maybe the checklist is something we should put on the end too, once we look at all the components of this workflow.
Because this looks...
This certificate of compliance is issued to the petitioner from the planning department. What's missing is those three other certificates of compliance from the three other departments. Because once they go, this is just kind of encompassing them, because you could not get this certificate without those three others.
Right.
Yeah, so if you wanted to add the other three. So it depends on what you want this checklist to look like. As city, as a city counselor, I would like to see something that's like, yep, I talked to DPW. I talked to...
You can, you can do this as a, like a headliner, and then bullets of, um, certificate of compliance from planning board, first bullet, planning board, Department of Public Works, and...
City.
The city council, and the city, or the, the city engineer, Department of Public Works.
City Solicitor.
That's one, the city solicitor.
Conservation Commission, if that apply.
Boom, 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 boom.
Yeah.
Just little bullets to say, make sure you check with that, 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 and that.
As a city, that would be, that would be good information, I think, for city councils.
Yeah, as a reminder, that, you know. And that would kind of take report of findings from town council and DPW kind of almost out of it. But they do have that further down, those certificate of compliance to the petitioner from the planning department, petition department.
That doesn't get issued without those other ones.
Right.
So I just kind of want the other ones listed on whatever checklist we do.
Wouldn't you want the hearing before the planning board? Before they petition the selectmen of the city council, in this case, to lay out the way, why, right? So there's, why do they have the certificate of...
I think we all like the idea of the checklist, but when I really started looking at it, this...
Another way, they have this, this certificate of compliance, which we're gonna incorporate all these in, and then it goes to the planning board, then they petition the city council, but really, shouldn't they have a hearing?
Right.
And then if they approve it, send it to the city council. I don't know, I mean, just...
So there's two, there's...
Otherwise, we're...
The first, the first four or five files don't make a whole lot of...
Well, we have to think about who this checklist is for. If it's for the petitioner...
It's for the petitioner, the developer. Or is it for us? Yeah, I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean?
Or we could do two checklists.
I would like an internal checklist, because we have been missing pieces.
To follow the paperwork.
I think we need that. I don't think it's a bad idea.
An, an internal checklist, so that when it goes to each department, whoever's the chair of that department signs off on it. Yes, I did this.
So then, when it gets to city council, we need a piece of...
And moves it along.
That is like, this department, this department, this department, this department, here's all the information, that would be my ideal.
And 21 years later, when someone's looking at it, you can at least pick it up and say, well, it did go to the, it did go to the Board of Public Works, and this is the person that signed off on it.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Or this went to the...
But I also think a checklist for petitioner is one of the ideas, so...
So he knows, or she knows what...
The petitioner, the petitioner checklist will go out in the packet. Once it's filed with the, once it's filed with the planning board, and, and they come, then there should be a checklist that starts with the planning board that follows each of the paperwork, each of the departments, so that the planning board's reviewed this, and now we're moving it on to here.
Yeah.
On the state, move it on.
For street acceptances, do, do we have like an application from the planning department that they fill out? I have no idea.
Okay, we really should have Jessica come in and see what it is, how, how, how they do it. What are the first steps that they require?
I think that's an excellent suggestion, Julie. I mean, once we kind of, you get this together, maybe the next thing you have Jessica come in and say, listen, Jessica, how's it done now?
How's it done? Yeah, well, how, I wanna develop, I have a piece of property and I wanna develop it. What do I do?
Well, I mean, she doesn't even ask to mention, she just...
Of course she did.
Yeah, well, she could write it out.
I don't want to polluting for any...
So pose the question to her, say...
Right now.
If I were to walk into your office today, and I have a large piece of property that I can subdivide, what's the first thing I should do, and what are the steps I should take? Before coming to you.
But ultimately, it does sound like...
Just so that we can kind of get a, I mean, I don't know what to do. I, I don't... I mean, my grandfather developed Ritz and Circle, but I was, I was three or four years old. I, I, you know, I don't remember. Nor would I have any cares about it, so...
And like, in the case we're dealing with here, is this particular developer, at what point did he or she say, any developer, I wanna have my street accepted? What do they do? Do they come into the planning board, or do they just...
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how it...
Do we have timelines that are...
Right.
And those are the things that I knew we could do in service, so I was thinking of, so that's why I...
You said we'll put that at the end after we...
So if you look, the next page is actually an application. It says, uh, registered mail number at the top. I have two copies of this, so if you...
Yeah, I have, registered mail number.
So then they put the street name, and then they send it to the planning board for the above named street they're requesting, so.
They must have it.
So if you look at the last paragraph, it says, I respectfully request a meeting with the board after review of these materials, and then confirmation of the required inspections to allow the petition's street acceptance, please come back to my office. So this looks like...
I like that.
That first step.
For the acceptance.
For the petition.
For the acceptance. When, when they've gone through all of this other stuff, I'm ready. I'm ready to go forward with this stuff. Now I need to send this as a registered document to the planning board and say...
Well, and this is, you know, the...
Here is my stuff.
Do you have a tin? Do you have a copy?
Yeah, I have one, I'm, I'm...
I think you do, I have two copies.
Oh, wait, I may have. I broke that up, so is this...
Starts off with registered mail number.
Registered mail.
So this looks like...
So I'll put that in order where I'm working here, so.
Oh, and who knows, I might have shuffled it, but I'm pretty sure they were at the end.
No, no, I've shuffled these between looking at one and...
Yeah, I didn't have them stapled, so I, I did the same thing you did, paper clipped them, so.
You know, when I ran off, I have a bunch of copies, right before I ran out the door, I would have loved to have stapled them, stapled parquet, I said, well, you know, we're all grownups. So this looks like the first step for the petitioner. So this would be the equivalent of what we're referring to as an application, and this would be handed out with the checklist.
Go back to nine and 10.
Nine applicant or as represents, representative shall make the motion on the form, town meeting, but will be taken except subdivisions.
So that's what we're doing.
Where's 10?
If, if it's section A...
Section 10A.
Right.
Sorry.
So I don't see 10.
I don't see 10A. I see a nine, but...
Is it this 10, this nine and 10 here, that goes back to...
Petitioner shall record...
A vote.
That's, that's a recording after some, after the acceptance. So I, pursuit to section 10A, items two and three.
10A, so far.
I don't see 10A.
Well, perhaps.
Did we miss any page?
Could be. I mean, I did just rip this off the internet, really, completely, so I can go back.
See, section 10A, two and three attached, please find the following documentation to be approved by the planning board prior to final request for acceptance in accordance with sections 10A 4. Sounds like 10A might have a lot of good stuff in it.
Well, I'll go back and take a look and email you whatever I find.
Well, that's good, so that, this just now brings it right back to the planning board for the final disposition.
This looks like the first step, actually.
You think this is the first, though?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. Attached certification that the petitioner does own and...
So, or maybe this is, maybe this is the final step, where they have all the certification.
Deeds, two copies of the attached easements, deeds property to be transferred...
That's when the mylar's done.
To be filed on behalf of the town.
Sorry.
That's all right. See, I respectfully request a meeting with the board after review of these materials and the completion of the required inspections to allow the petition, to allow the petition and street acceptance. So this is, this is the request of the last meeting with the planning board.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
For them, I think, to accept all of the packets, and for the planning board to say, yeah, okay, yes, you've met all of the requirements, and then...
So the planning department would give us a copy of this letter...
Yep.
And the checklist signed off.
Yep, along with their recommendation, saying, yep, this petitioner has met all of the criteria that we set forth, has met all of the certifications, and we recommend that the city council move forward in the acceptance of...
Yep.
The street.
And then, there's even a...
What are these stone bounds?
Well, there's number four on this sheet here, it says...
The stone bounds.
Attaching a certificate of a registered surveyor relative to setting...
Are those pins?
Yeah, I think it's the pins, that's what they're talking about, you know, a lot of places have the old stones, like the square stones.
Yeah, maybe they're just using antiquated language.
Yep, well, and I actually asked Jim about that, because the lots would be pinned, and he doesn't really care so much about that, but the stone bounds of a property, especially if it's working from the development into open space, or where that is gonna be. And he had said that that was a, a good thing to have in there.
To have stone bounds, like...
We can, um, you know, he can obviously clarify that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm not a surveyor, I just, I never heard.
No, I know some of the old, I must say...
But I could see that, you know...
Some of the older surveyors used to, they used to put the...
Trees and stones, and rocks, and...
Big square rectangular...
That big oak tree sitting out there.
And I guess the off pins could be changed to move where a stone, it's a little harder to...
Right. But, um, yeah, it wasn't so much the pins for the property lines, for the lots.
They're saying where lots up to open space or something like that.
Where that's, you know, the line of development. And I, and I don't know if it was, he was particular about...
This one goes to...
Whether it was a stone or not.
I think this one was part of this, the font and everything is off, I think. What do you have after that?
Other than the sample letter of the stone bounds, is that it?
Yeah.
Is that the last of it?
That's it for...
Sample letter for setting of stone bounds, and if you read it, it's not just the, the lot of like one piece of property, it's, it's for the entire...
The entire property that's still developed. Now, this is Andover. This is Andover, too, though.
There's more than Andover, Andover, just to keep it really simple.
Oh, this is North Andover, this is Andover, okay.
We've been dealing with North Andover.
Right.
Like the one I've been following a lot.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, so that kind of, those were Jim's notes on North Andover. That was the one that he really liked a lot as well.
I, I, I was drawn to that, too.
It's very clear, it's very well done, you know.
I like it.
Like you said, there's, there's some, you know, procedural things that we're gonna do differently, but...
Tweak it for our...
So, um, do you wanna do the Westford one? I know you had some comments.
No, I just had that one question of Westford, I mean, I didn't go through my, I mean, I just had, I just had scarred that at one point.
For some reason, I don't have Westford, but, um...
As I said, I only was wondering, it was something maybe we could put in, you know, using the North Andover. It just made mention of that, if they delay, which, you know, we've had in the past, if they delay, that once they go to have it completed, they have to bring the road up to the standard of...
To the original standard.
To the original standard. I mean, I, I just thought that one thing.
That is a good little...
That motivates them to not wait for years, because then they're gonna have to put a new road in.
Well, if we look at the, so this is how Westford did there, stated the statement of purpose, you know, to provide an understandable description of the process required to bring a road forward for acceptance, and then their definitions of it. Which I thought was nice, that it actually defines a lot of the language in there. What's a resident, what's unacceptable, what's a definitive plan, that kind of thing. On this first page, there's two things that, that struck Jim.
And this is which one?
This is Westford. Westford that you don't have.
Yeah, Westford that I don't have, okay.
So, the number five and number six, betterment and neighborhood funded. The neighborhood funded is that secondary acceptance where it's...
So the betterment would be subdivision, and neighborhood funded would be...
Oh, so that, that would be the street acceptance of a private way, right? Where the, where the residents petition the city to accept a private way as a, as a city street.
Yeah, and these guys actually mentioned a standard for the road, the standard set by the planning board and specified in the definitive plan. So, you know, we're, we're not reimagining the wheel the same.
No, we're not, no, no. Street standards should...
Where was...
He had five and six that he had.
Yeah, five and six, he kind of, he wanted us to take a look at. So if you look at prior to street acceptances, the town engineer must assess road condition.
What number is that?
I'm sorry, I'm on the second page here.
We've got only one page. I don't, I think they have a second.
I have four pages. Five pages for Westford.
For Westford?
Yeah.
Julie, I have no papers.
Yeah, I don't know, I...
It doesn't have a title on it, though.
I went through all of these things, and then of course, we have so much documentation from...
Well, let me just read this one real quick. Some of these items are weather dependent, this means that they cannot be properly performed if there's no frost or cold weather presence. Performance of most items would not meet standards if they were done in winter or early spring, would therefore result in furniture failure or deterioration. This is the main reason for the requirement that work is not started prior to April 15th. Additionally, inspection of many items would be difficult in seasons if possible during winter or early spring. Few examples, inspection of bounds covered by snow. An additional concern is that the practice of the town of Westford to observe the roadway through the course of one winter to ensure that there are no defects that could result from immediately necessary repairs. Is that something that interests you? Seeing a road, a new road survivable to...
May not be a bad thing.
So they're saying if it, you check it, and then after the first one, you do the second.
Stress test.
Yeah.
I found my other Westford one.
Oh, okay.
Stress test.
So you were reading on what page?
I'm on the second page. I'm on the second page. And prior to street acceptances, the town engineer must assess the road condition. So the utmost importance to observe the function of drainage, including infiltrating systems and detention basins through an entire winter. It's kind of one of those things I wouldn't mind putting in the draft just to see...
See that.
See if the DPW bites or...
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, it is a draft.
It's a draft.
It's a working document. We could, we could ask for anything. It's whether or not the city engineer, Department of Public Works, and planning department finds it reasonable or unreasonable. After all, they're not the ones putting it together. We are.
Right.
So...
So I just highlighted responsibility builder of subterranean to build all roads to the standard that was approved in the definitive plan.
From Westford.
Hey!
And you're on the second page?
Yeah.
Is it a numbered section?
Yes, they're unnumbered. I think you were on prior to street acceptance, town engineer must assess the road. I think it might be page two.
Instruments.
They're big. Go deeper.
Is this Tinsborough then?
That's different. That's one word.
No, Tinsborough. Certificate. See, they're all...
They're all different.
I can't remember the top, but I'm close to... Does he know? Mentioned her names on the second and third pages. Town engineer, town selectman. It's like, no, give me a name. I don't... One of the reasons why I know this is Westford is because Westford's actually listed on the page as being here.
And that's where it mentions the subdivision's responsibility goes back to the definitive plan, right, which is IP law.
Yeah, I like that. I think that's the whole run. I think that's a good pickup on the parts for that. So I'm remembering now that one of the reasons I got Westford, even though it seemed a little not as complete as the other one we had, is that they had a lot of language for the kind of secondary application where it's a private way and the residents want to do it. And they had a list of the following steps. See, you have that page in front of you?
Oh, this is it, okay. Yep. The following steps. Oh, here we are. Yep, okay.
So I like that they've added, you know, in all instances, the most recent critical reply. I think that's a good thing to put in there. And this is how a resident would do it. You know, the citizens may submit a written request to the board to select it for street, then it goes to the town engineer. All conditions, punctuals must be met. Completion, residency contact with conservation director, blah, 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 street acceptance plan. So they would have to create one. This, I think, we could refer back to if it's determined that we need something specifically for. But you'll notice that with their street acceptances, they did one separately. Yeah. And it continues on, actually.
I find it interesting that the resident should request a meeting with the town engineer. A resident?
Well, they don't have any oral system, so I mean...
Should be residence?
It could be a private way that's on the... We don't know. Yeah, it might have that grammar and pronouns we can...
Yeah, exactly.
That was basically the gist of that. And if you move down to G underneath that, which is the next page, I don't know if you have that.
Probably not. I'm still trying. This is Andover.
A statement from the Westford fire chief certifying that all fire protection requirements, including but not necessarily limited to installation of fire hydrants and systems.
I like that.
We're in public safety. I mean, do we do that?
Where, so... Where is that language in the southern...
So I asked Jim about this, and he said that, you know, when they're submitting plans for subdivisions, they do talk to the fire chief about where placement of things should be.
But maybe you're saying we should get a statement from the fire chief saying that he saw the plan.
It should be certificates of lines do we want. I think that's a bad idea.
It should be in the plans. In the planning department should, shouldn't they have X amount of fire hydrants, X number fee?
Right.
It's going to be masterful.
They do talk to the fire chief about it, but there isn't anything. He doesn't, there's nothing formal for him to sign off on, but he's always involved. But I don't think it's a bad idea. So is it another one of those things? Do we chop it in there and have to go, that's a needless?
Yeah, I mean, at least this particular fire chief, I don't think would have a problem, especially if it's a...
Absolutely not.
I'm trying to look at it from the viewpoint...
Right, and I'll give people just...
Our job is public safety. That's why we're doing...
Not that we want to give people busy work, but I think it should be done right. I mean, so...
Yeah.
Because that's another thing. Ten years after the streets and a house burns down and they say, "Well, jeez, there wasn't a fire hydrant. Why wasn't there a fire hydrant closing?"
Right, or it wasn't working.
Right, or it wasn't working. I mean, you could at least have, go back to a document and say...
When's the last time it was flushed? And did the DPW flush it because we didn't own it?
Right. You should go back to a document and say, "Hey, this is where we put them. This is where the fire chief signed off on them."
I think if we keep the focus on public safety and that clearly, the fire department falls under that.
Oh, yeah.
Then it's...
A lot of the reasons. He would also be the one that we would go to if we needed to do more parking and things like that because we've got to be able to get the engines and large vehicles in and out.
Yeah.
Especially some subdivisions, you know, like, you know, ones we're dealing with.
So they have a statement of compliance.
Some of these smaller ones are like dead end streets where you put five L's and, you know, that's really crucial, like what you say about...
And what they have the chief certifying is that all the fire protection requirements, including but not necessarily limited to installation of hydrants and systems, have been provided and satisfactory. I think parking is a great thing to add in there, too.
Was it that the turnaround on, was supposed to be where a fire could turn around, I guess, or a plop? Maybe it was a plop.
Plop, but if a plop, if a plop can turn around in there, then the fire engine should be able to.
Right.
The standard is, you know, if I can't get one of my buses up a side street because of snow or cars or whatever, I call police and say, you know, "You're not going to get a fire engine up here."
Right.
If I can't get my buses down there, the fire engines aren't going to get down.
So I thought it'd be, maybe tack that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what? And that was it for Westford.
That was it for Westford. There's a flow chart that showed how things, which I know you liked, Jim totally liked. And I'm like, people react differently from a flow chart.
Well, you know, I did like it. I did like it. And then, and then when I started looking, I liked the checklist actually better than even the flow chart. I think we put the procedures together and then see which ones...
I like that, too. You really like it? I like this checklist.
That's the same town, right?
It is the same.
This is Virginia. If you could, yeah.
They have the flow chart, too.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But I really like the checklist.
So the low one is just the one street thing, one page thing, and it's just, it's just the information for the petitioner.
Okay, so that was just one page, low?
Yeah.
And Andover? Was this, I have one page, was it Andover? And Tinsborough?
Oh, yeah, that was the really... So there's a, there's a big one here that starts off with...
Oh, this is kind of the thing that you're putting together.
Yeah, that's a big one. That was something I saw.
What's accepted and what hasn't been?
You have to be careful with that. I look out and I see things and I think that's a good idea and I have a giant project to fix.
We're going all...
I know. I slapped it down front as a homework out. He wasn't kidding.
We're everywhere. San Juan Fair is everywhere.
So this is the section...
Which is street?
I dot eight dot two.
Who is this from?
This is the town Andover.
Oh, this is Andover, okay. Yeah, okay, that's Andover.
What's Andover look like?
Andover, that's Andover. They have the little...
I got that one here somewhere.
And that was one, you know, I didn't want to, I wasn't going to come up with this giant fifty-page document.
So what do you see that puts your interest in Andover?
It was like four pages?
Does it have something to do with...
How many pages do you have?
I have two, I think.
So total of four pages.
Four. I'm missing two. What are the last two?
I think there's this one, Brian Moore PE.
Oh, is that, that one was?
An important notice. The other last page is important notice.
Important notice, that goes there?
And PE. There's a Carol and Gray Day there in the middle, right about there. So they do it a little bit differently. They ask that it's submitted directly to town council. I think everything should, I think planning board should be the hub.
Yeah. Again, they set the criteria, they set the, they set an all emotion. Oh, this is not Jim. I don't see anything that is in here that, frankly, that the good one hasn't mentioned.
So under special requirements, which is page three.
Okay, okay.
Number two.
Didn't we have something?
We put something in there about that.
But I'm just, I'm kind of trying to put together...
That's almost the exact line of somebody else.
Yeah, oh, no, everybody, I don't feel like we're named that they all get, but making sure that that's all done.
Yeah, before we start setting time limits, we're going to have to, when we go to each of the departments for their input.
Oh, absolutely.
That's what we should ask them is, "What would be your time limit on this?" And let them set their time limits.
Exactly.
It'll take us thirty days to do that. Okay, so thirty days.
Now, this one has the, within thirty days of the town meeting acceptance, or at least city council acceptance, the planning department will file the appropriate deeds and instruments of the registered deeds. And we have the...
Yeah, no, I like them.
We've made the planning department basically the hub.
I thought one of these had the petitioner doing that.
It did.
Yeah.
You have the planning board.
Yeah.
Or the petitioner.
No, once they get the check off and everything, then the petitioner can file it, probably cost money, you know?
So, yeah.
It doesn't really cost money, it's a thing.
Well, and that's one of the things, it's like, I mean, we lose money. I understand. We've got to stop losing money. I don't think it's going to be income generating, but we have to not lose money, you know?
Well, every time that we make things redundant or things don't get done in a timely fashion, we're losing money and time and manpower. So we want to streamline it and make it efficient.
So those who think, like, I mean, after you read a couple of days, the same things is coming.
Yes, they're just kind of worried, a little different or placed in a different order.
And that's exactly what I thought was going to happen. This checklist for state maintained roads. So this is for state roads. The only thing that Jim saw on here, certifying that the property corners are set, that goes back to the stone boundaries. So we'll have to bring him in and get some more information on what exactly he's...
He could even write the language up.
Right, right. Okay, so now we've got another big one here. This is West Boyleson.
All right, so you want some history?
Low, we're done. We only have the one street on lower.
Yeah, that was just their information kind of thing. I was just looking at different ways of presenting the information.
No, 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 absolutely.
You know, we all like flow charts, and then we're like, "Oh, justice."
I like checklist.
I just want to make sure everybody, you know, that the style is coming through.
West Boyleson.
Yeah.
Some history? West Boyleson?
Yeah.
West Boyleson Corporation. Left West Boyleson and built in East Hampton.
Wow.
AKA, that's all of the warehouses. That was the old bridge of a perfume pond.
I always look at the street names.
Boyleson Avenue and...
These are chess and...
That's why. Almost all of them have evidence of West Boyleson moved to East Hampton when the West Boyleson Corporation picked up and moved to East Hampton.
Right.
It's reminding me of something that I forgot about, so whatever.
You were terrible.
I just changed, I didn't tell, but I didn't think I picked that, but I did look.
You did, I didn't know it was, see, I'll tell.
I changed the text messages. I changed it to, it's just somebody saying hello because there's no good text. There's no good knowing. So you're like, "Oh, that's fine."
Oh, that thing got canceled, so I'm good with that. I just didn't put it in that was canceled.
How many pages do we have from West Boyleson?
I have one, two, three. I have four.
Four, too. Yay, they got some...
Not to jump ahead in there, I have, this one's the last one left. Is this somebody else? To Jim?
Yeah, there's a couple of little other things right there.
So we're on West Boyleson. I don't remember seeing anything in here that...
Well, these, we kind of just marked up ourselves from the last thing, so it'll be the DPW.
I like this, "These procedures are not intended to give legal advice." I always like those kinds of disclaimers.
No, and we have a great city solicitor. I'm sure it'll be...
They should consult with their own attorney to ensure compliance with legal requirements. Yes, thank you. "Applicant shall submit all required documents and materials in one complete submission to the planning board." Yeah, that's good. That might be something.
Where are you?
I'm on page two, number three, at least three months prior to town meeting.
Okay.
Not necessarily focusing on the timeframe, but...
I have that underlined, too.
You did?
One complete submission.
Yeah, one complete. We kind of bolded it, so...
Rather than piecemeal it into...
So we all kind of like that. So then we do need a list of those documents and materials, then? So that, there's, you know, an item for a checklist. There's the stone bound certification. So number four, and these are notes that I got from Jim earlier, "Copy of the layout plans to show the streets and the easements by courses and distances for the signature block provided for city council." So that when we do that final plan and we take care of it and we say, "Yes, these are street acceptance," that city council...
This is what we have now. Is it just the president? Or it says here, "President of East Hampton Town Council." This would be now, I guess, the president of the city council, or is that the town council being there?
Surprise, it doesn't have diamonds or...
Let me read it. Let me just take a look at this real quick.
Town council would be...
The East Hampton Town Council. That would have been the president of the town council, not city council.
Right, no, I don't know. But it wouldn't, wouldn't it be the president, like the chairman of the board of select?
No, because when we...
That was different when we had...
When we were originally elected, we were a town. We were not a city. We did not become a city until afterwards. So this would have been for Mayor Wumans to sign.
Like, I used to be a town meeting member, so that would be the...
Town com, right. Well, that was select board.
Right, it was a selectman and then they had the town meeting members.
Selectmen and town meeting members. This is East Hampton Town Council, and that's what we originally were, was the East Hampton Town Council. So what they did is they probably just changed this from select board...
I see. So this was when the quote city council was first established, it was called the town council.
Right.
And diaphragm.
So I can ask for, I think that this probably acceptance of deed, this was probably changed and added in there just to cover the East Hampton Town Council. this was probably changed and added in there just to cover the East Hampton Town Council president of East Hampton Town, not all of the city councilors. So we weren't a city then, so.
So what this is saying is that a copy of the layout plan, so a copy of the plans that actually has a block, you know how architects will sign the drawings or whatever, that they have city council do it?
That's all we have?
That's it, that's our...
That's our current.
That's our current.
This is why we do what we do.
If you notice, I, well, I highlighted this one, but it's a little more like contribution.
Is this going to, this will all have to go to ordinance, right?
Oh, yeah, no, it's going to go to everybody, I mean, this is definitely going to be accepted. So we do have...
Well, then then.
So one of the things we need to come up with is basically like the final, what does, what does city council do? Do we sign a copy of the plans, do we fill out a form like this?
What does city council do? Reviews? Probably reviews all of the submitted documentation.
Right, right, but say it goes through all the town, that comes through, and we all vote yay.
So then we just sign off on it, and we vote on the street acceptance.
What are we signing? Are we signing, is there a block on the plan that we sign?
No, I...
We do something like this.
I think that by accepting the deed in the street, yeah, that's fine.
And the city council president, after a vote, can sign off?
Yeah.
Just like they do on some...
Yeah.
I think what they do do, though, in having gone to planning board, I mean, certain documents the planning board signs off right out of the document, I know, what you're talking about, Jim, blocks on those plot plans and that.
Yeah, exactly.
That the planning board members, so they would have already signed off on that, so I think we just need to sign off right out.
So what we want, what we want from the planning board is, is everything, the complete document, just like they're expecting from the developers, come to them, and we would just review it, and if we had any questions, we pull in the planning board and the developer, and just say, okay, we'll bring it to city council as presented, and...
So we're going to need a new one.
Yeah, this, this absolutely needs to...
Written, and that needs to be written.
And I'm surprised she didn't change it now. Because it should be city council.
Yeah.
That one's got my notes on it, if you want, this one, Joe, you can have it. I'll just highlight it, it's on the back. That one, no, I don't care, I just wrote my notes here.
So the thing is...
I write my handwritten notes, so I have two copies, if you don't mind my... I was just trying to, like, I was highlighting, I had to do it, I voted the same one, I must have made a copy here.
I'm going to highlight this, because it's third, it's the second time I've seen it. The deed of the gift, the open space parcel, if there's one.
If there's, if there's...
We have the, we want the conservation commission to sign off if it's a wetlands thing, but we need to incorporate this deed, that if there is some sort of...
I think that has the language in here, of this one here with deed in it.
I didn't remember seeing it, but that's why I'm highlighting that.
They did.
There was something on that.
There was something in here about deeded. Petitioner copy requests to pay compliance, easements, deeds. That would probably fall under that.
Well, it's a deed of gift for open space, if open space comes out.
I know I saw something in here for open space.
Well, we're going to add it if it's not there, so.
If it's in here, find it, if it's not, we'll add it.
We'll add it. Number 10, a copy of any homeowner's association instrument that establishes maintenance responsibility for stormwater or other utilities.
Yes, 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 that would be your condos. AKA, the one up on Main Street that... Yeah.
Including, so, that was something that Jim had pointed out, number 10. Are you there, Dan? Wes Boylston, two of four.
Copy of homeowners' association instrument that establishes maintenance compliance.
Yeah, I think we've brought that in.
Check down.
Yeah, especially with the stormwater starting to become an issue.
That could be an issue we go for.
I would hope that we're handling it much better than North Hampton. I just, that's so wrong with their doing, I'm sorry.
I don't really understand their system too much, but...
You know, taxpayers don't need that kind of added.
Number 11 and number 12, I just wanted to run by the attorney to see if it's something we should add.
Title to which any person of this... Oh, that's kind of like what the language we put on for the poles.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That...
That we have a right to put the...
And that would not be for the roads that we take. These are not for the, our accepted roads, this is probably more limited towards...
Up and over, yet accepted.
Or, or the privates. This was probably language towards private ways and private roads.
Yeah.
Giving the city the right to be able to go in and, you know, fix stuff.
So what I, the notes I...
See, that should be, that should really be the landowner's responsibility, but I don't know.
Well, and the other thing is, this is something that they do at town meetings, so they have to really cover themselves, because they don't have as big of an administration as we do. So my note next to 11 and 12 was just to ask the attorney.
Where's this for the land court? Yeah, I don't really...
And third, running to the inhabitants, I don't know.
Yeah, guys, I didn't see any of that in the other Massachusetts, in North...
In North, I mean...
North Andover, I didn't see any kind of language like that.
Right.
So, yeah, I would be interested to know what is exactly what pertains to.
Communities go through a situation, and they're like, well, that can't happen, and you throw it in there. So some sort of situation came up, so I just thought it'd be worth it to ask, you know? Because it seemed like kind of a...
What is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is this pertaining to?
And then number, number 15 is another...
As to what, did Jim have anything to say as to what that might pertain to?
No, I tried to keep him on stuff that went directly with him, just because it was really, that he got back from vacation, and it was nice of him to spend, you know, an hour or so with me, and I tried to do it...
Sure.
As quickly as possible. Wanted to, but 15 is another proof of payment.
That's the recurring language they all have.
We like that. And then...
They have the conservation commission under 4A.
So then, we moved on to number nine. So then, pretend it says after acceptance at city council.
Must record, execute copy conveyance, easements, utilities. And maybe that goes back to that other language here that we were questioning, conveyance of utilities.
Well, yeah, we were allowed to go back to those things. It's B that I'm really interested in.
Requesting...
90%. Upon, we're releasing only 90% of the original bond amount. After all, engineering and town council review fees have been paid.
Do they ever have to release the other 10%?
Yeah, I mean, what...
I mean, I think that would...
What do they do with the other 10%? I mean, I could, I could see being...
If this went back to the one that you held over for a year while you saw how the winter did it, I could see, you know, you submit everything, we'll give you 90%.
The engineering and town council review fees.
We... So the, so the city keeps 10% as, well, town council review fees and engineering fees? Of course, it does, it does cost the city money to have city solicitor come in and review things. It always costs us money for engineers and any personnel, city personnel, to, to take time out of their day to review this stuff.
The goal is to make the city not lose money.
Not lose money. As you said, now we're not trying to make money, we're not losing money.
So, upon request of the applicant, I think that, well, I'm not quite sure what is the applicant...
Either, I mean, it's either incredibly, or there's something we don't know.
Either you're going to say 90% will be, of the original bond will be released back to the developer once the streets have been accepted and whatever, with 10% being held over as city fees, but that, that's kind of like...
We can email them and ask them.
I would want, I would want to be more open about that, you know? I would want to say at the very beginning that... A certain amount of bond money, 10% of the bond will be applied to administrative costs to the city. For, you know...
Is there any, again, this is just an open question, because I don't have the answer for it. I know, like, if you take a building permit out, there's a fee, you go to the planning board, there's a fee.
Right.
If you go for a road acceptance, is there a fee?
Not right now.
Not right now, so that's...
Does anybody do that? Or is that, is that the 10%?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that might be what they're trying to cover, or maybe we could, maybe that's something we could look at, of having a fee when someone comes, although...
I think the city solicitor review fee would be something to...
Right, it'd be at least...
Well, see if it's legal and see if we can do it, and if we can, that's definitely a discussion that I think we should have, have the money go back into the general fund. Because it does cost the city money to accept.
Especially the employee's time, is one way, but also, I mean, the city solicitor, every time he's working...
Exactly, exactly, we have to take him per hour.
Because they're...
That's kind of, he's got S number.
Is he a per diem or an hourly or not hourly?
He's hourly.
He's hourly, so I mean, that's easy enough to do.
He's an hourly rate.
Right.
We set aside in the budget a set amount, but if he goes over that, we have to...
We have to appropriate, yes.
Right.
Something that'll appropriate.
Yeah, no, he's, he's hourly, that's why when I was president of the council, I was like, nobody talks to him but me. You give me your questions, and then I will ask.
I'm going to interrupt with a question about that, because I do, we are going to have some questions for the city solicitor with this.
All right, so my suggestion to you is put all of the questions together, and then submit them to Joe, for Joe to submit to the city solicitor, because last time I, last time I knew, any questions or whatever without the express permission or consent of the president aren't going to go to the city solicitor, because the city solicitor is on...
No, I'm glad this came up, because I meant to ask, okay, pop to Joe.
Yeah, I would, I would write all the questions down and send them to the president and say, you know, President McCoy, these are the questions that we, to be have answered for the committee, could you please submit them to the city attorney?
So I think the city solicitor fee is perfectly reasonable.
It is reasonable, I...
Because these are complicated things.
But these, but...
Secondarily, do we have a fee for the procedure just in itself?
Like a building. I mean, you could, maybe that's something we could...
I feel a little uncomfortable about, you know, the city engineer, because he's a city employee. I believe this falls under the purview of his...
I mean, I guess if I was a...
And because we're taking the role where we're spreading it out over the other things, this should be easier for the city solicitor, engineer.
What does the fee like a developer pays to the planning board, is it? I mean, I don't know what that, maybe that's something else.
I don't know.
Jessica also, like, in other words, if they're already paying to file the subdivisions a large amount, I mean, if it's a few hundred bucks, then I have no problem.
They're going to be filing with the cur, deeds, right?
Oh, they're going to have a lot of filings and those other things.
They're going to do that, for sure.
Yeah.
I think the city solicitor fee is kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't...
And that would be one of my questions.
Do we have filing fees?
I think there was filing fees with the, the planning board, I just don't know what that fee's going to be.
Maybe this falls under the filing fee, like, I would be comfortable with that, but I do think the city solicitor is going to take it, because it is looking at...
It's doing deed research. I'm interested, though, to find out, like, they're only, they're only releasing 90% instead of 100%. If I was a developer and I read that, I'd say, what? I know, my other 10!
Like a bail bond.
I'm a genius, it's...
How do you do that?
I'm going to email them and see if, and we have an answer.
You know? Is that interest that you take off my money? I didn't, she's paying me interest.
This public street layout and acceptance was pretty much standard edition of new information.
That's just from here, the last one.
Yeah, this little kind of junky one that came through.
So that was our last one?
And that was it. And then, this was the, the, the list of streets that were accepted and uns-accepted from takes care of, which I think, you know, I said at the beginning, I think we should have four.
Yeah, well, I think North Andover, really.
Yeah, I think we can use that as the...
They're pretty thorough.
I think that's going to be the master, and then just sweep it to our...
And then add in...
Add a couple of things.
Tweak it, and their street acceptance checklist.
Add in some of the things we saw from the others.
Kind of take some stuff...
I did see that, it was under J of that, and H or J of...
Take some other stuff with their little checklist from others.
J here, where Jim said good of North Andover.
Yeah.
Minimum address of each property owner in easement and open space.
Where are you?
Everybody was asking about open space.
Yeah.
I think it's on this one.
See, this...
A deed, a deed and a, no, it's a deed and gift of open space, we just talked about that.
Set it up, their check, you know, with our checklist, but kind of with, I like little squares where they have to be reviewed, you know, who reviewed it, and, or whatever, something like that. A date, yeah, definitely there'd be a date.
There has to be a date line, and then the chair signature.
Who, date.
Joy Lees.
You know, and, I do, no, really, you know what?
I don't...
I live by lists.
I just couldn't...
You know, I do, I really...
It's not the word by...
I am all for whatever.
I do live by lists.
Whatever.
And I, and I keep checklist with me every day, and I make my next days, because that's how I keep myself on task and...
All right, so date, and then the signature, when you would prefer boxes.
Boxes or sign off, whatever, you know, just, but the date and, definitely date and signature.
Stickers, I like that.
Little stickers, stickies.
Yes, that's, it's definitely a good thing.
When we have best of luck, and we put a little smiley face to it, it's...
That's a lot.
Lots of emoticons, all of them, all emojis. So thus concludes my little presentation, thank you for slogging through that with me, I mean...
I appreciate you did a lot to me.
You have done a lot of work.
Well, printed things out, put things together, I like doing stuff like this. You're a total weirdo, but I like procedures.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to go that far.
Oh, this was, um...
You have, you have a lot of really good ideas, it's, 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 it's good, no, this is fine.
Right.
I mean, we're a city, we don't, we don't live by trages of anything.
I know, I didn't find this. It's like, it's too small to find.
Oh, my goodness.
This is a sample of a bond, this is required for Fox Run. So this is something else that we're going to maybe look at when we're looking at...
For Fox Run, North.
Yeah, this is...
Fox Run is off Hendricks.
Yeah.
It's a development, that's one that's, I think that's another, that's one of the others that hasn't been approved.
This is what Jim gave me, because I was saying...
That's the one that Root did.
It's on the right-hand side, past the ex-former mayor's.
So that's just a sample.
It actually, it was where we were at Willow, when we looked through at the barricade.
Wanderly, he's a...
So this was, so that was a sample that he gave me, because I had asked him, I wasn't quite aware of what our procedure for the bonds was, because I'm like, okay, so what if we...
Second time renewed a vocal...
You know, so we've set, we're going to put forward Willow and Autumn for acceptance, do we really respond, and if we do, where is that money, because this happened in the 1990s, like...
Is there a bond?
There is, I think there's like an doubt.
Ten grand. So, second time renewed.
Do we have like a, you know, there's got to be a record of an S from somewhere.
Away from, it's right here, the, it's right here, reference.
That's just a sample, that's not...
Oh!
That's just what it looks like, because I'm like, what does our current bond agreement look like? So that if we were going to make changes that said, we're deducting snow power, deducting...
This is, this is...
That's where we put our, we keep 10%, that's where we reset, right?
Let me take it.
Just kidding.
I think you said we in terms of...
Yeah, we, no.
Not you and her.
Well, yeah, that's...
If you're going to, if you're going to, you know what I'm saying, if you're going to, if, everything should just be...